There she is.
But, no, you know, I barely handled my own. And you can not respond because that's ignoring someone and that's.
I was, do.
If you do respond, there's nothing you can say. That's right.
Yeah.
You know.
I was wondering what was happening to you? If we should go up and pick you up? Yeah?
Okay. Um.
Yeah.
Um. Attorney Madsen, I noticed today on the agenda that the public comment on non-agenda items wasn't in there. I was, I was, I think it just probably last week got excluded. Or I have no idea why, but.
Somehow I've.
Last week it was needed and then this week it is. And we would like to insert it after the consent agenda and before the first informational items.
You can definitely do that. There is no issue with that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so the open meeting, uh, BOT session, open session is, has begun here at 7:04 PM on December 6th, 2022. Um, actually Macy, tell me, do you need more time or? Technology? When you're ready, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mayor Billy.
Here.
Trustee Corvallon.
Oh, here.
Trustee Kumsizma.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Here.
And I had on my quorum that trustee Severs is joining, but it looks like he might be absent.
He will be late.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, um. We already had our executive session and we are going to go into the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent, consent agenda. Are there any questions or, or discussion from the BOT?
Yeah, I had the, I think the, um. Four, one and four, two were spot on, so no issues there. The. Yeah, I've read four, three, four, 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 five, and I'm, I'm good with those. So I'm ready to, I move that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. Thanks, you guys. Um, Macy?
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsizma.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Sorry.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion passes.
The motion passes. Consent agenda for today's passed. Um, so though we don't see it here in the agenda, I would like to open. We didn't have any public comments on non-agenda items submitted into this agenda today because, well, because of the agenda that we ended up with today. So I would like to ask for public comments on non-agenda items.
And Mayor Billy, I do think maybe it's important for people online and in the room to know that we had moved.
Yes.
An exestation ordinance.
Yes.
So that's being moved to December 20th. And so if there are public comments about that, that should be done at this time under non-agenda items.
Thank you. Yeah, just so people know, because we did change some things around.
Why, why did we move that? I'm just curious.
Because, well, thanks, Tanya. I don't, um. We just, we. Decided that with the combination of Karen, well, of a trustee resigning and a lot of public input and requests, you know, to better understand the IGA by one of the trustees, by you and me. Um, and just the need to better give ourselves more time to make a good decision with more public comment and more consideration, we moved it to the 20th. So I apologize. I, I thought that was, um, I, I don't, I guess I did not talk to you about that specifically.
No, I, I saw that it was moved just from the emails. I just.
Okay. So the action, or the, what is on the agenda today is the master infrastructure plan update, the 2023 budget, the Colorado family and medical leave insurance plan, trustee Blake Moore's resignation and the Colorado wildlife protection plan. So are there any public comments on non-agenda items that I did not just state? Go ahead, if you would, please step to the mic and adjust it. And it may or may not be on, I'm not sure. Oh, yeah. Use that one instead and just state your name and where you live or your relationship to Netherlands. And then you'll have three minutes.
Great. Yeah, I'm Eric Davis.
Just one sec, um, while I get untangled. This, the sound is real touchy on these.
Great. Um, yeah, I'm Eric Davis. I'm the one who submitted some thoughts, um, a couple of days ago in light of thinking that this meeting was about the annexation policy. I live in the McMillan neighborhood. And I'll be speaking kind of fast because I have a lot to say, but I think it's important. And I'll also email what I'm about to say, so perhaps it could be included.
Just, just one second. I'm sorry, Eric. Is there a three-minute timer just so we can stay on task and keep?
Okay.
Yeah, go to both everyone.
Um, so I, along with several others, are worried about direct conflicts of interest between down decision makers and prospective annexation applicants. Uh, this is a standalone issue that's concerning, but it's significantly more concerning when put in the context of an annexation policy that you're crafting that removes important checks and balances and truncates the process by which annexation applications are considered. Uh, my first question is what actions are you going to take to make sure no conflicts of interest enter into any of your decision making? My second question is what efforts have there been to renew the intergovernmental agreement? Uh, this is an agreement that's been in place for over 20 years. It exists to involve all the relevant stakeholders. Um, it makes us a stronger community. If we of a town decide we want to operate in a silo, we will be siloed from important community neighbors that offer the town benefits that we don't currently have ourselves. There is no reason not to continue this agreement in its current form. Uh, it costs nothing and it creates an important bond and partnership to a powerful neighbor. The current draft of the annexation ordinance that exists materially condenses the annexation process. As the draft stands today, you'd be creating a fast-track policy that eliminates the voice of critical stakeholders and eliminates important provisions in the current policy. Here are a couple of places where this happens. The current draft removes the county commissioners and the citizens of Netherlands as decision makers in this process. Each of these entities has a say in these decisions right now. So the question is, why are you cutting two decision-making bodies out, leaving the board with all the power? This is not right, especially in light of conflict of interest concerns. Uh, another concern in the current draft is section 15 dash seven, step seven, which has eliminated the need from all landowners of the proposed annexation land to sign the annexation application. Um, I'm questioning if this is even legal and what the rationale is. You say it's not feasible to include all landowners. But it doesn't make sense to me that not all landowners should be considered in an annexation application. There's another concern in section 15, 12, 6, O, and P that states the annexation applicant is required to create a traffic impact analysis and a narrative describing the impact of the proposed development on the environment of the town and the proposals to mitigate any negative impact. My question is, what is a narrative? How is this viewed as being independent from the applicant's own interests? Where in this policy is a requirement to have an independent agency evaluate the impacts on the natural environment? You appear to be giving the applicants the ability to choose their own agencies to conduct these studies. The town should appoint these agencies not only for housing needs assessments, wildlife impact assessments and traffic assessments, but it should be at the cost of the applicant. This is the only way to.
Time's up, Eric.
True independence in the analysis results. Thanks. I will email the rest of these for the next, uh, meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate your comments. Are there any public comments, any other public comments on non-agenda items? Kayla?
Hello?
Um, just one sec. Uh, we have someone in the room stepping up and then you will be next. Do you mind using the, the, the black microphone from your left?
Uh, Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. Um, while I appreciate, uh, Mr. Davis's, um, comments, um, I am a little concerned that he believes that there is conflict of interest anywhere along the line. Uh, it's, it's real easy to say that without any proof behind it. So I would, uh, uh, hope that in the process that those things come to light so we can certainly address them and make sure that there is no, um, concern for the, uh, people in the community. It's never been, it never will be our contention to have any kind of conflict of interest. That's not the way I operate as a person and that's certainly not the way my family operates in this project. So that given, uh, those people mentioned in his, um, reading that he just did, Mr. Davis represents one person. He should speak for one person. If there are other people that have a problem with this, let them come forward and say so instead of hiding behind the emails and the internet and whatever if they have a problem with this, that white elephant that we're all talking about in the room, which is, um, a sad thing. Uh, this project has been on the books for 10 years. It's hopefully going to be something that will benefit the people in this community in so many different ways besides housing. And, uh, if you know me or you know anything about this project truly, uh, you would come to me and speak to me before going down other roads and involving organizations that are not involved in this. So, um, I appreciate that there will be pushback. I appreciate that. My objective is to address those things, to give people a comfort level that will come from knowledge as opposed to hearsay. And, uh, I thank him. I would relish a conversation with him personally as opposed to doing this, this direction. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kayla. We have one more, um, Ron, is in the room here is gonna, we have one more public comment in the room.
Where did Ron come from?
Are, are you, were you gonna make a comment? I was just telling the people online because someone online was wanting to make one too. So, no, you, you, you.
But I know Kathleen calls in and so I.
Okay.
I'm letting Kathleen.
Okay, Kathleen, um, now, or if you're ready, now would be great. Sorry, Ron.
Great. Kathleen Chipai, 31-year resident, East Magnolia, 19-year business owner. Um, I'm a little concerned and wondering why, uh, the BOT is making a decision tonight on what they're gonna do about Karen Blake Moore's vacancy. The woman just resigned on Saturday and.
Is he likely to do that when we get to?
Oh, I, um, no, because I'm just saying, I don't think it should be on the agenda today at all. That's what I'm saying. Now, also, I was stunned when I read the summary about Karen Blake Moore's newly created vacancy. Quote, "The person appointed or elected will hold the office until the next regular election, April 2024." And that sentence, end quote, is a matter-of-fact sentence. Um, yet months ago, I sat in the courtroom and I listened to attorney Jen Madsen, "Are you under oath?" That the town's code wasn't clear on the term length of an elected person when that person is being seated for less than a full two-year term. She said that the code says a person is elected to a full two-year term and that she felt that meant that if someone was elected outside of the general election, then it would confuse and throw off when people's terms end and when elections occur. Um, when it was occurring in the courtroom, I was confused. I think the judge was also confused. And, um, and I think the judge was wondering why Netherlands is letting language in the code that he was being told is unclear, why they would let it stand. But I don't think the language is unclear at all. Um, I was upset hearing her testimony in the courtroom because never in Netherlands history had someone who was elected to fill a vacant seat and filled it for more than, fill it for more than the next general election. Um, there never was this being off a term or having to have an election two months later because somebody who was elected with less than a two-year term left because of a vacancy wouldn't be simply going until the next election. I mean, that has never occurred. But I, I just want to point out that I'm really, really disheartened that in tonight's packet, it's clear, the town knows where they stand, but it seems like the BOT seems it's getting more clarity than the judge because the judge didn't get that clarity whatsoever. And it was actually argued the complete opposite. That if David Seitz was elected to a term that was less than two years, that we would throw off the elections and there would be a requirement to fill a board seat two, three, four months after an election. So I find that disheartening and I question what our attorneys saying to the BOT and putting in the packets and what actually is being argued in the court of law. Under oath, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments, um, in the room or, or online on non-agenda items? Ron?
Mitchell, 3A South Jackson, Maryland. I was here when the current IGA was being formulated and I was against it then. I'm against it now. I think it restricted Netherlands' ability to make its own decisions. And I think it was done primarily to inhibit development.
Thanks, Ron. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Give you a minute. I see a lot of names out there. If you're talking and, um, not getting acknowledged, um, hit star six. Um, so hearing no other comments, I think we can end the public comment and non-agenda items part of the meeting. So moving on, um. We are moving to informational items, 5.1, the, the master infrastructure plan update.
And this is gonna be introduced by Nathan Scalek and Emmett Pelletier. Nathan, are you there? I can't hear you if you're talking.
I am here. Yes. Yeah, so we presented the, the, the updated MIP study last BOT and I understood that there was a few, a few comments that we addressed, which primarily involved the paving aspect of various portions of Netherlands. And so in communications and, and coordination with Emmett Pelletier, uh, we basically put together a list of various paving locations that the town has identified as locations needing paving in the near-term future to repave the roads. And so those have been updated in the MIP report that was submitted. And I believe it is in the, um, um, the agenda for tonight. I don't actually have the agenda, so I'm not sure, uh, for certain. But, um, we did include the paving. It identifies four locations and we could talk about those in more detail if, if necessary. But I guess I'm kind of open to comments or questions if there are any at this point.
Phil, you had questions on the, on asphalt, right?
Well, I, I did have questions and I had, I had, as you, my email was included in the, um, packet and Emmett actually had replied to me with some of the, um, with, no, with, with answers to some of my specific questions. I just, um, and. All in all, I, I appreciate his answers and I agree, I, I agree with his answers. Looking at the plan and being able to see the actual paving in the plan was, was a great, um, clarification. And, um. I agree, in general, I agree that paving makes sense for significant high-traffic arteries that, as you described, or steep or challenging roads or just a better option than gravel and, or repaving roads that were paved in the paths and just need to be repaved or, or fixed. Um, I just want us to consider as the BOT down the road and, and streets that the costs of excessive paving and some of our lesser traveled, lesser steep, less troublesome roads in the future may exceed the benefits. So that was really all I was really gonna add at this point since Emmett really addressed my questions. And I, I do appreciate the work you guys did and I appreciate the delineation of the paving on the plan.
And I suppose one thing I'll add is that, you know, the MIP is a kind of a, you know, in my way of saying it, a living and breathing document. You know, it's gonna be, uh, ever-evolving with the, the needs and, you know, various changing conditions in Netherlands. So, um, I think this is a good roadmap to kind of start, you know, going down the right path. But I think as the town moves forward, it's, it's important to note that none of these are set in stone. Um, you know, things could change and I think every year it is important that the town kind of look at the MIP and reassess the direction that it's going and kind of the focus that, uh, uh, various funds are being applied to. So I, I know it will change and, you know, it could change after a big storm event or, um, a variety of other options. So, um, it is, it is kind of ever-evolving. And so I think it's a, it's just a good kind of, um, background in the sense of what needs to be addressed in the near-term future as identified by the town and JBA as we've worked with the town. And, um, yeah, we look forward to seeing where it goes and hopefully see some of these projects, uh, come to light in the near-term.
Nathan, since we got tax money, we can do things. I wanted, also want to say on the, on the plan, I really appreciate, I, I love the comments section. Off to the side, I can see what was changed, who altered it. It's, if, you know, if people buy in, if they have questions for each other, the, I, I learn just as much from the body as I do from the comments.
Definitely.
Good to hear.
Any other questions or comments from Eric? Nicole? Tanya?
Well, I just have, just add on to the paving that you were saying. I kind of agree with you about excessive paving because I know that we have, uh, with our paved roads that we have, when they have the potholes, when they start getting pretty bad, it takes a while to get them fixed versus when they're dirt because it's such a bigger deal to come in with the right equipment. And I, otherwise, I mean, that's just what I'm guessing because we've had a lot of really big potholes in, you know, like Schneider Street and stuff like that. It gets fixed, it comes back, it's huge. Versus the dirt roads, I feel like they're a little easier to quickly fix. Um, so I think in the neighborhood sometimes it might be better to keep it like that and not get crazy with paving on, because that is also pretty slippery too. So if you're not gonna foul regularly, um, then there's really no point in, I think, in paving everything. But that's my two cents on the paving. It's a big document. It's really thorough. Um, and, um, thank you.
My last comment is, um, I, uh, I appreciate where you delineated all the swales too and just all the necessary work, whatever the road is made of. Necessary work that needs to happen for just stormwater drainage and handling runoff. Appreciate all that detail was really awesome, um, all over town. And, um, yeah, just regarding, yeah, I appreciate what you just said, Nathan, about that's a living, breathing document and that we can continue to look at this over time because, you know, as technologies change, you know, about ways of paving and, and materials for paving and as we deal with climate, you know, concerns and, and smart decisions we have to make around our impact on the climate. I just, it's good to be reminded it's a living, breathing document and I like the, the guidance of revisiting it every year. So thanks. I think.
I do just want to acknowledge that tonight is Emmett's last meeting.
Oh.
With the Board of Trustees. Um, Emmett Pelletier has submitted his resignation and is, is going to our Boulder County counterparts just down the road. Um, but just want to take a moment and thank Emmett for all of his hard work. He's been with us for six-plus years and has done an incredible job and, and stepped into the streets supervisor position when we, of course, were going through a major change and just really want to thank and acknowledge everything that he's done and, and hope that the Board of Trustees will do so as well.
Thanks, Emmett. Appreciate all the work. Congratulations on the new gig and wishing you all the best.
Agreed. Congratulations.
Emmett, I will miss you on Tuesday nights. Thanks for fixing that big hole in the ground on, on Lakeview.
Yeah. Yeah, I, uh, I appreciate the praise. It's been a pleasure of being with the town and a huge stepping stone. Um, so, yeah, I, I appreciate all of it, but obviously I've decided to move on. So, yeah, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Emmett. I appreciate, congrats on the job. It'll be an awesome move for you and, um, and, uh, thanks for everything you've done and problems you've helped solve with us. And we're glad you've been able to learn some things here and, um, glad you can bring it forward. And we'll miss you more on these meetings than you'll miss us, I'm sure. So.
You can always, you can always come visit. And I should note that Emmett has agreed to stay on in a part-time capacity to support, just if, if and where needed, and that means a lot to me too. So thanks, Emmett, for everything.
For sure.
Definitely. Yes, thanks for.
You're welcome.
Well, thanks a bunch. Appreciate it, everyone. So we're gonna move on now to, uh, our first, we have three action items tonight. And our first action item is the 2023 budget. And, um, we're gonna have Rita. Rita, present for us.
Evening, mayor, trustees, and members of the public. Had several meetings these past few weeks discussing the 23 budget. Is that better? One small change since our meeting last week is the property tax revenue decrease in the amount of $4,381, which only affected the general fund. We did discuss that last week as well. Also, the NDDA had a couple of changes. They increased their PIF projects by 120,000 and that is a carryover amount for the Big Springs parking project that will not be completed in 2022. Also, there was a small increase to their interest revenue and that's really all the changes since last week. So tonight is about taking that final step where you'll be adopting the 2023 budget. You have four resolutions in front of you. Resolution 202251 to adopt the 23 budget and appropriations for the town and the DDA. Resolution 2022 dash 53 to set the mill levy for the town and the DDA. Resolution 202254 to adopt the 2023 fee schedule and resolution 202258 to allocate the lodging tax, lodging occupation tax revenue. That's what you have before you tonight. And before I hand it back over to the board, I wanted to thank Miranda and attorney Madsen for all their support.
Thanks, Rita. Appreciate it. So I'd like to do one round of clarifying questions as needed and then we'll go to public comment.
Feeling okay.
Ditto. I think we did our homework before the meeting last time. Uh, the, the, I'm, I sat through, I went to the DDA thing afterwards. I'm comfortable with that. Fee schedule, we talked pretty extensively, okay with that. So no further questions.
Yep. I also went to the DDD, DDA meeting and I'm also feeling comfortable with, um, the changes, so.
Tanya? Any comments or clarifying questions on the budget?
Nope. Um, pretty much what I was expecting. So I appreciate all the hard work. Thanks.
Yeah, and I too, I feel like through these meetings and then I spent some time with Rita, um, a month and a half or so ago looking, looking at the numbers. And then at the NDDA meeting last Wednesday, that was super helpful. Um, and been privy to a lot of good email chains to really dig into the weeds. And so I feel like things are looking good on that budget. We'd like to open it up for public comment. So, um, if you have any public, any comments on our budget proposal for 2023, um, yeah, love to hear from you. Anyone online have any comments on the budget? Anyone online have any comments on the budget? Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for either discussion or motions, series of motions.
I move to approve resolution number 2022-52, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023.
Second.
Macy, when you're ready, would you take the roll?
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Isma?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yep, yes.
Thank you.
That first resolution passes.
I move that we move to approve resolution 2022-53, the budget mill levy.
I'll second that. Macy?
Trustee Kooms Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second motion passes.
We're just going down the line. I move to approve resolution 2022-54, setting fees, rates, and charges for various town licenses, permits, and services.
Second.
Macy, when you're ready?
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kooms Isma?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
No.
And Mayor Prota Mahol?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move to approve resolution number 2022-58, allocating 99% of the lodging occupation tax revenue to be transferred to the Health and Human Services Fund and the remaining 1% to stay in the general fund and be allocated to law enforcement services.
Second. Macy?
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon? Trustee Kooms Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mahol?
Yes.
All right, that's it tonight.
So the, all four motions, all four resolutions are approved.
Just on the continuation of acknowledgement, I just, I just want to thank.
So much hard work.
This has been probably one of the toughest budgets that we've done. And not only did Rita prepare this budget, just a reminder, in 2022, Rita did two supplemental budgets as well. And so Rita has been exceptional as our town treasurer. And I'm just so thankful for all her hard work and celebrating that we got this done. So very.
Let's not forget the audit.
And the audit, right.
That's coming up.
She's like. For Rita. And Rita's always done it and always been very supportive and to both the BOT and department heads, a lot of them were new to the process. So huge shout out to the department heads for holding strong as they dreamed with us. And we had to cut them back a little bit and just working through what was a very difficult budget. So thank you.
And to our citizens for approving the funds that made this happen.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Yay, Netherlands.
Thank you, Netherlands for voting for those tax measures. Thanks Rita for all your work and enjoy your vacation.
If you haven't packed up. Yeah, you can leave now.
As well as all the department heads, they're also going to jump off. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, department heads.
Thanks, everybody from town staff. So I'm going now on to action item number, or second action item, which is, I think we'll scroll here, 5.2, I think. Six, I'm sorry, 6.2. It's the Colorado Paid Family Medical, Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance item. And I think.
Yep. So this is the second time this is coming back to you. We had previously presented the Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance. And really, ultimately, the Board of Trustees tonight is having their official hearing on whether to opt in or to opt out of this. Based on the discussion at the last BOT, meaning the feeling was that we would opt out and that is supported by staff, because even with opting out, an individual employee could seek to opt into this. Trustee Kooms Isma had asked if town staff would support them if they were to opt in, and we absolutely would. We would support them in filing the paperwork. Still trying to work through the logistics of whether we file for them or to support them. But either way, if they reported it themselves, we would be side-by-side with them and making sure that was done. And so we feel comfortable recommending that the town do an official opt-out of family. And there were no, so we did send an invite to the board or to the town staff. So they were aware this was occurring tonight. There was an invitation to give public comment. There are a few still on, or to send in a letter to the board, and no one has done so. And some of the feedback already received is in the packet still in name.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'm still in agreement to.
I have a question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have some clarifying.
Well, yeah, because we talked last time, there seemed, correct me if I'm wrong, general agreement, it seemed that there were three options, that there was opt-out, decline all participation, opt-out, decline employer participation, or opt-in. At least that's what, that's what the packet thing from family says.
Got it. And I may turn to Attorney Mattson. Ultimately, I know an employee can still opt in even if we opt out.
Right. But the decline employer participation says that this, that is the system by which the town would still process paperwork for an employee who opted in if that were to happen, rather than them being on their own. So I just didn't want to be in a position where we declined all participation, and then it actually turns out that the town doesn't have the authority to participate in that employee's filing, if that makes sense.
So I can respond to that. In between, I think it was in between the time that this was presented to you originally and tonight, there have been some amendments to the rules by the Family Division. And the Family Division has specified that a local government may not decline participation in the family program in part. Any declination by a local government is a full declination of family program participation for that local government employer. The rule goes on to say that except such an employer may enter into an agreement with an employee who elects coverage where the, by the employer agrees to provide administrative support to that employee with regard to the employee's family obligations. So in other words, if you decline, the town can still help and assist that employee in submitting their benefit amounts or their payroll deductions.
Great, thank you. That makes sense. I mean, in that case, I'm probably, if I were to make the motion, it would be to include that the town will adopt as a policy administrative support for employees who request it. That makes sense.
It does, and we're comfortable with that. We don't know what those logistics look like just yet. And so I think that that's something we want to talk with ADP about to also understand their capacity in supporting here as well. But myself, Rita, and Kristi are in full support of whatever that support looks like as providing it.
And you probably don't need to contact ADP and, well, because there's nobody interested at this point.
No, we did contact ADP and their two is trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
And so they didn't have a lot to share with us right now. But no one has expressed interest. And of course, if, if they did, we would push on that a little bit more. But ADP basically said, we're sorting through it.
Everyone, every HR department in the entire state is sorting through it right now.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, it seems like when we met about the, before, the state was still sorting through it. So did they, I mean, you mentioned that they've, they've narrowed it down. So did that happen in November? When did that actually happen at the state? It's not the end of the world, but they, they've met and decide, made more clear, more clarity to this whole thing since we met last.
Yes, there was an amendment to the regulations related to local government involvement in the family program. And there could be more amendments. So it's just, it is a program that's being implemented by the state and it is, it's new and the state is working out issues as everyone goes along.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Tanya, do you have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, I'm just reading some of the comments and about the paid time off and trying to see if I understand it. Currently, if they, if someone doesn't use their paid time off, they can bank it to use later? Is that what the current policy is? Or is that what this policy would be?
So the current policy is if you don't use your cap by the end of the year, that whatever you have remaining over your cap can get rolled into an emergency fund that we use to support employees for a variety of different reasons.
Oh, it's like a joint pool that you guys have.
Exactly. So say your cap is 176 hours, but you have 200, you can roll over those 24 hours, 24 hours could then go into the emergency pool. Employees can also donate afterwards to 40 hours to other employees for, for any reason. And that's another opportunity to, and oftentimes you see that, like when someone goes out on maternity leave, you see a lot of employees come forward and donate their PTO to that person. And so we've really been able to make it work.
Do we compensate them when they do that at all? Or no, it's just like a charitable thing?
Personal choice. Town has a, has a really robust PTO policy. So oftentimes, a lot of people end up with excess or over their cap. And so this is just an opportunity to help a fellow coworker. And it seemed to work really well. That emergency pool has, you know, quite a bit from people who had been with us a long time. Larry Johns is a great example. I think his cap was like 300. And so he, from year to year, kept rolling over tons of hours and it just, he ended up contributing quite a few hours to that emergency fund. So you often see that happening more with department heads who have the excess.
That's nice of everybody. So has anyone done like a rough math, you know, how much this program would cost, town and net specifically? Not, it's like a 50/50 match with employers? Employees?
Yep, sorry, they're digging for that answer.
Oh, okay. I wasn't looking at the, I mean, it sounds expensive, I think, for everybody, but it sounds like a great idea.
It's a, it's a 0.9% of the person's salary or pay that is sent into the family program. The employer pays 0.45% and the employee pays 0.45%. Yeah.
And I see you said a lot of communities are opting out. Do you know any municipalities that are deciding to opt in?
I anecdotally only know of one municipality that opted in, and I believe that was the city of Littleton. And I'm not sure exactly the specific reasons.
And again, it's not a mandatory program. If an employee decides to not do it, then town wouldn't put it in their fund and they wouldn't put in their fund, right? Or is it mandatory if we adopt it?
If you opt in, so if you, as a Board of Trustees, decide to opt into the program, then everybody has to participate.
Right. So otherwise, now if someone wanted to opt in, they would come to us on a personal basis?
Exactly.
Then they only pay. Have to contribute the 0.45%?
Only the employee contributes the 0.45%. The town doesn't contribute the 0.45%. So it's only the employee who would individually participate.
So what would that point, what would the point of that be? Just to, they know they're going to have a baby and they think it's gonna, it's like a way of saving?
Yeah, I mean, maybe they want, it's kind of like a short-term disability insurance. And so, you know, maybe you've got employees who are risk averse, or if they know they could plan ahead for medical issues such as babies. But also, some employees may want to participate not knowing if they're going to have a medical issue that could come up.
It seems less desirable if we're not kicking in though.
Well, actually, the benefits are quite similar, Tanya, even if it's an employee-only contribution. At least last time I checked, the only benefit that you would lose would be the employment protection benefit. The rest of the benefits remain. So it's kind of a good deal, I think, to do it on an individualized basis if an employee wants it, as long as we're providing the administrative support and that's not a barrier to entry for them.
Cool.
Any other clarifying questions before I, before we ask for public comment? Okay, so want to ask for public comment? Does anyone have any comment on, on this discussion around the family benefit? Hearing none. We'll come, bring it back for discussion and/or motion.
I move to approve resolution 2022-55, opting out of the state-run Paid Family Medical Leave Insurance Program or family, and that the town of Netherlands adopt a policy for assisting with the administrative overhead of, for any employee that would opt into that program on an individual basis.
Second.
Trustee Corvalon? Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mahol?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
And Trustee Kooms Isma?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks, everyone. We now are moving on. Actually, is everyone doing well? Does anyone need a break? Okay, we're moving into our third action item for the evening. Action item 6.3, Trustee Blake Moore's resignation. Miranda?
Yes. So unfortunately, Trustee Blake Moore had submitted her resignation letter to the Board of Trustees on December 3. So tonight before you, we just wanted to start an initial discussion to see if the Board of Trustees had a recommendation for how they'd like to fill that vacancy. As a reminder, your options are doing it through appointment or through a special election. The Board of Trustees has 60 days from December 3 to make that determination for how you'd like to fill the vacancy. This is an action item. So you could choose to make that determination tonight, or you could choose to table it for a future meeting.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for clarifying questions? Specifically, the question before, before the board, does the Board of Trustees want to fill the vacancy through appointment or a special election?
Well, I don't have a clarifying question, but I'm, I'm ready to make a comment about it.
Go for it. Oops.
Okay, well, as much as I'm not a fan of appointment at all, I feel like we don't have a choice right now. We can't really have another election for just one person so soon after we've had two elections. I'm pretty ticked off about it that it wasn't timed better for the two elections that we already had where we could have put this in. We're a big fan of people voting for things, but I think right now we don't have any choice because we can't operate with six people for very long without running into issues. So I think we need to do an appointment and we need to do it as soon as possible.
Thanks, Tanya. Any clarifying questions for Miranda?
I've got one. If we did move to a point, what's the timeline?
So typically, we do a three-week application time period and could release those by the end of the week. And then it would come back before the Board of Trustees at your first meeting in January for, the applicants would come forward for consideration.
In the converse, what's the timeline if we were to go to election?
Yep, you're probably looking four, four months out. Because you have to, you have to adhere to state statute guidelines. And it's like, one of the first timelines is 91 days before an election is when you'll first circulate nomination petitions, do 71 days before your election. So you got to count out 91 days plus some change, and then you start to work your way backwards. So that's why I say about four months, because it would take some time for Macy to pull together all of the components for another election.
Good questions. Any more clarifying questions from trustees? Okay, we'll open up for public comment. If you have any comments on, on this action item about filling Karen, Trustee Blake Moore's position, now is the time, you got three minutes. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the, to the trustees for discussion and/or motion.
Comment, I don't know that I want to go through deadlock decision-making for that amount of time. I would, I would like to get, it wasn't easy with four, it wasn't easy with six. I would, I would like to get, it wasn't easy with four, it wasn't easy with six. I really liked the few weeks that we had seven.
It was a beautiful thing.
It was.
I mean, I have resignation fatigue, I have election fatigue, I'm fatigued. I think I agree with trustee Corvallin on every count, including her dismay at the situation we find ourselves in. Preference, obviously, for elections at every possible opportunity, but we, I think we have to appoint.
I'm in favor of an election. It's, you know, just a lot of spotlight on an election and the people's desire to, to vote on things relevant to us. And I don't, you know, maybe my time on the board is as much with seven as without seven. And I haven't experienced such a debilitating experience of less than seven. We need four votes to pass with six and we need four votes to pass with seven. So we need to make decisions, obviously, and I, I see that we could make decisions with six just as easily as with seven. We need four people in favor of, of anything. So that's where I'm at with it.
But you would recommend having an election over an appointment, getting to that seven as quickly as possible?
We, we appointed Nicole and that was, that was just after an election.
It's okay. I mean, come on, it's working out okay.
And, you know, I, I feel that there's some merit to not too heavily weighting either option. I think both options are good. And I guess I don't, I don't mind the prospect of four months with six. But again, my, my experience with less than seven is limited, so.
Let me ask you, Jesse, how strongly do you feel that on a scale of one to ten, the need to have an election over an appointment?
Six?
Okay.
There's.
That's helpful. That's about where we always end up. And so the three-three thing seems to haunt us, so you have to make sure you motion for the thing you don't want because it's gonna fail, because we're gonna tie. All that being said, as I, I just think, I agree, I love the process of the election, but the three months versus three weeks seems kind of debilitating. Really, yeah, yeah, correct. Like three-plus months, four months versus, you know, a little over three weeks seems more debilitating to me. And we are kind of split, I've noticed. So getting to four, getting to four with seven just happens. Getting to four with three, getting to four with six will be more of a left. So I'd be more along the lines of an appointment.
Tanya, I trust your judgment. What are you thinking?
What?
What are you thinking?
Oh, well, I mean, like I said, I really want to have an election, but I'm trying to remember, when you have six, the nos win, right? So I just want to know, I gotta phrase everything so that it's.
Yeah.
That's right.
When it's a tie and then the motion fails.
Need four votes whether.
I mean, I would, I don't really want to spend the money and do an election when we just had an election. But if the majority of people wanted it, I would, I mean, I would prefer an election. But again, what a process again, you know, I'm just, like, like Eric said, I'm really fatigued of it. We haven't, since April, we haven't had a really fully functioning board and for just like, we had it just for like two months or something. So like, I'd like to just appoint and I hope that we can get some good candidates. I was, but yeah, if, if the majority of people want an election, I would go for it. So we are, we're three right now. We, I mean, we're six. So again, you know, I would, I would do it. I just don't think it's practical or logical at this point.
I got a question for you, Miranda. It takes three weeks from December third, yes?
Well, no, it would be three weeks from whenever we release them. So usually Peter needs some time to get them on the website. So say we release by Friday, we do a twenty-one day application period.
Which should be December thirtieth in time for our January third meeting.
Yes, I've got a strong preference to start twenty, twenty-two-three with a full board.
I think you guys have the votes. If Nicole or Tanya can go with you, I feel like the three of you are, will pull one of them.
Will you still be my friend?
Of course. We'll have to vote on that.
So despite having been recently appointed, I would have preferred an election because I think that would have been a nice balance. And we're stuck. And I think I share the desire to have a full board for the new year as well. So I will, so I will appoint or be in favor of appoint.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion to appoint the next board of trustees. Yeah.
Second? Go ahead, Macy.
Trustee Severs?
No.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesma?
Yes.
Mayor Prozema Hold?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
All right.
The motion passes, we will get ready to appoint, or get ready to move towards applications to, for appointment. And thank you, Jesse.
I know, we really agree with you. Get those applications out by Friday and then do, we'll push it out on social media and all the respective channels to let people know.
And for everyone listening, please reach out and let's get some good candidates in.
Yeah, we had great candidates in the last appointment round and look forward to more. Thanks, everyone. So that gets us, or that completes our action items for tonight. And real quick, does anyone need a break? This next part you don't want to miss. Okay. We're gonna move now into discussion item of the Colorado Wildlife Protection Plan. And I want to welcome the folks who are here from CU and Miranda, would you introduce the name?
I don't necessarily have a name. We have this, the CU students here to do their presentation. And I have it up. And then if you want to come to the podium here and use the black mic, so there's a push button. And then Macy, will you change the screen so it's like full, so we get rid of all the people at the top? So I think under layout. And then toggle over the full screen view. Perfect. And then you'll just want to tell me, because it's on my computer, just tell me next slide when you want me to move on for you.
Okay. Cool. Do we have to talk into this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Use the little black microphone.
Oh, it's on. We're good. Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah. My teammates, Kiran and Ellie, we're CU Boulder Master students. And over the past nine months, we've worked with the Boulder Watershed Collective here to help complete a nine-month project in Netherlands on community collaboration on wildfire resilience in Netherlands here. And so if you haven't heard of the Boulder Watershed Collective, I'm on the next slide. They are a Boulder-based nonprofit. Their mission is to cultivate partnerships, promote community stewardship, and revitalize social and ecological systems.
Can you use the, the black microphone instead?
Creek watershed.
There we go.
And one of the many ways they do this is through collaborative community projects that work to improve the forest health, but also to address local concerns, so to engage the community about the impacts of wildfire. And so we specifically, and Boulder Watershed Collective specifically focused on Netherlands because hopefully you've heard by now, Netherlands, oh, next slide, thanks. Netherlands, along with Timberline's Community Wildfire Protection Plan, will be updated in twenty-twenty-three. This will be a collaborative effort between the town, the NFPD, and Boulder Watershed Collective. Just a little background on CWPPs if you aren't aware yet. They came from the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of two thousand and three, so they've been around for a while. Netherlands has one that was created in two thousand and eight in response to that act. And then it was updated again in two thousand and eleven, but it hasn't been updated since. And these plans are really cool because they allow communities to sort of establish their own priorities for wildfire risk mitigation and are really able to kind of be individualized to address wildfire risk mitigation in the area. So the reason that this is a big area of focus right now is because the bipartisan Infrastructure, Infrastructure Act was just passed and there was about five hundred million dollars allocated for community wildfire events grants. However, you cannot get that money unless you have an up-to-date CWPP. So there's a big push for updating these right now. Next slide. So our project was really just the very first step of this whole process. And it was just to engage the community of Netherlands to figure out what your priorities were so that we could provide really robust recommendations for an inclusive CWPP that was actually actionable and included as many voices as possible. And so, next slide. Community engagement can be very resource-intensive and hard. And so we applied for and received a grant from Wonder Labs through their Living with Fire Design Challenge. And they, their mission is to expand wildfire risk management capacities and capabilities for just, inclusive, and equitable outcomes. And so this money helped pay for the dinner that we had at our workshop and we were able to pay participants for their time. So that really helped us to engage with you all. And I'm gonna hand this off to Ellie to talk about how exactly we engaged with you, if you haven't heard from us yet.
Yeah, so our methods were three-fold. We held three community workshops. Our first one was in the middle of summer. It was pretty small. Our second one, however, was after we got grant funding and it was actually held here in this community room and some people here were in attendance, which was really fun. And then we had a third workshop with Teens, Inc. and the Netherlands Youth Board, just because youth are often an underrepresented population when it comes to wildfire resilience planning. So it was really interesting to, to get their perspectives and see what they had to say. And then we conducted thirty-eight one-on-one interviews with community members and decision-makers. Community members were defined as people living within the boundaries of the Netherlands Fire Protection District, which we kind of opened up to surrounding areas because we didn't want anyone like in Timberline to be excluded by those parameters. So living in Netherlands for a minimum of six months. And then decision-makers were people who had a role making decisions that influenced wildfire planning and resilience. So yeah, thirty-eight interviews over the course of the summer. It was really fun. We got to meet a lot of people, which was great. And then as Sarah mentioned, with that grant funding, that kind of opened up our capability to include underrepresented populations. So we conducted that workshop with the youth. We spoke to representatives of people who are houseless. We spoke to, yeah, just, we just talked to representatives of people in the community without like targeting those actual community members because we didn't want to like, I don't know, target those populations. So we instead spoke to those trusted representatives. Next slide, please. So we had three research questions. Our first research question was split into two parts. We were looking at the role of community members and decision-makers and how their role influenced wildfire, or their definition of wildfire resilience. Next slide also, sorry. Yeah, sorry. And then the second part of this first research question was looking at how the role of those community members and decision-makers translated into wildfire resilience action. So for that first research question, we were looking at definition and then action. Next slide, please. And then for research question two, we were looking at wildfire resilience definition and then how that translated into wildfire resilience action. So it's kind of this like little process we went through. Yeah, I'm just curious how the meanings influenced the actions that they recommended to achieve this wildfire resilience in Netherlands. And then our final research question was looking at salient factors and how that influenced levels of home mitigation, collective community action, and support for forest management strategies. So home mitigation and defensible space was super important, living up here in Netherlands in the wildfire, or wildland urban intermix. And then collective community action, we heard in, in almost every interview about Saws and Slaws and just how much people really enjoyed that sort of like community building, but also how that helped with wildfire resilience. And then finally, support for forest management strategies. So that could be like targeted thinning, patch cuts, clear cuts, and then prescribed fire. Yeah, I'm gonna hand it back off to Sarah.
So to answer our research questions, we took a more academic approach to analyzing the data. And so the way we did that was first we transcribed all the interviews. So then we had text data that we could sort of identify themes in. And the way we identified themes was just based on what people were talking about. So if someone was mentioning that they were concerned about moose in a certain area, that was, that would be put into kind of the wildlife theme. And so once we had all of our data put into different themes, it was sort of organized. And then we, you put that into a coding software, which helped us to distinguish different patterns in the themes. And these patterns are, were kind of things that either people mentioned a lot or we found that there were differences between the groups. It just kind of helped us to focus our attention on analyzing, which led us to then we use qualitative and quantitative analysis to figure out what those patterns meant. So if most people were talking about wildlife, what were they talking about and were there themes within that and what they were talking about? And we also followed a similar method to analyze our workshop data. So instead of sort of just compiling all the comments and picking what we wanted to share, we actually academically, very diligently analyzed this data to provide robust recommendations. And so I'm gonna hand it to Kiran to share the findings. Next slide.
Okay, so it was pretty hard to distill all of our findings into just a few slides here, but we're gonna give an overview. So for this first slide, I'm actually gonna focus on those words at the bottom before we talk about what this graph means. But those are actually the themes that we pulled out of the data. So ecosystem health was a theme that we identified when people were talking about forest health or wildlife or water quality. Legal factors was a theme that we identified when people were talking about fire bans, insurance, or building codes. Life and property was a theme that we identified when folks used the language indicating that they had concerns about protecting human and animal life and property in the context of wildfire. Land management, property and land management was a theme that we identified when folks talked about home mitigation and defensible space or like more landscape management practices like thinning, surface fuels, prescribed burns, things like that. We identified the social factors theme when folks were talking about community involvement, the exchange of information, community trust and reciprocity, trust and distrust in formal powers, and collaboration. There were a lot in this one. Or making sure that the voices of underrepresented populations were included in planning. The emergency plans theme, we identified when folks used language about things like egress and emergency communication systems. Resources, we identified when folks talked about time and money. And perceptions was the theme that we identified when people were talking about risk perception or values related to living in the mountains or the way that risk perceptions were affected by recent exposure to a disaster like a wildfire. So those are the themes and we use these throughout all of the analysis of the data for all the research questions. Did you have a question, Tom?
Yeah, the, the top says decision-maker versus community member distinguished there, please?
Yes, so this graph is looking, is a graph that we developed in answer to our first research question, which was how, what are the similarities and differences in the way that decision-makers and community members, community members define wildfire resilience? And so as you can see, we'll get into it now. As you can see, there's actually a lot of agreement here between decision-makers and community members. Those two bar graphs look really similar, which we thought was really interesting. The kind of top themes that we found in the meetings that people provided, as you can see, our land management, which was pretty heavily focused on home mitigation and defensible space. And then social factors, which I'll talk about in a minute. Once we kind of dove into that in a more nuanced way qualitatively, there were some interesting differences between decision-makers and community members there. And then emergency plans, and that was a lot of focus on evac and egress between both community members. community members and decision-makers. So, I think we're ready for the next slide. So, so this is an example where we kind of, oh, did you have a question?
Can you tell me what the money on the side refers to, or on the last slide?
Percentage.
Oh, the percentage?
Oh, I thought.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're good. That was the percentage of interviewees that used those themes. Which is a good question, because it wasn't like the number of total times they brought those things up, it was the number of people. So, so here's an example of a place where we dove into one kind of overarching code and found some more nuanced differences between community members and decision-makers. And we, we looked at those as kind of strengths and blind spots, not necessarily in a good and bad way, but as a great way of kind of taking these things into consideration for a more holistic approach to wildfire planning. So, for community members, social factors came up a lot in the context of the sharing of information, the accessibility of information about home mitigation, about all kinds of information about wildfire resilience. Community members talked a lot about community trust and reciprocity, and the idea that wildfire resilience really requires everybody to kind of be working together, and that if, if I do my part and you don't do your part, it doesn't really work at all. And then, that third piece there, this was an interesting one. Community members mentioned underrepresented populations quite a bit more than decision-makers, interestingly. And then, decision-makers focused quite a bit more on community involvement, and talking about ways of getting the whole community in on wildfire planning and collaboration. So, getting a lot of different kind of groups and entities working together. I think we're ready for the next slide.
I mean, just a little bit of irony there, going back to your last slide, is the decision-makers want community involvement and collaboration, and the community members say, hey, there's a lot of underrepresented populations here.
Yeah.
So, did, did the underrepresented populations articulate the context, or what, or who was underrepresented?
Yeah, there was, let's see. There was a lot of talk from community members about ensuring that folks who have physical disabilities are helped out in needing home mitigation and defensible space work done, also in the context of evac and egress, folks that have sort of special needs there. Yeah, people brought up the needs of elderly folks quite a bit in those same contexts.
Okay.
Am I missing anything? Yeah. Yeah, people talked about needing good, robust planning for folks that don't have homes in emergency situations and evacuation situations. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course. So, this is looking at the second piece of that first research question. So, how does, how do community members and decision-makers recommend action for wildfire resilience differently? And here, again, or, well, so, the top salient factor for, excuse me, the top recommended action for this one had to do with social factors. And for this one, across the board, it was information. People recommended a lot of actions that we, that we identified in the theme of information. And we can give some examples of that in a little bit. We also had some actual quantitative or statistically significant differences here between the rates at which community members and decision-makers mentioned ecosystem health. That was much more commonly mentioned by decision-makers as an action item. And legal factors was brought up a lot more often by community members as an action item. And usually, that had to do with action items related to incorporating insurance into wildfire resilience planning. This, this graph doesn't show, it, let's see, how do I put this? We, so, our, our third research question was, what are the salient factors influencing residents' level of home mitigation, engagement with home mitigation and defensible space, collective community action, and support for forest management strategies? We didn't have a great graph that like really represented all of that in one, one slide, but there's a lot of similarities here. Again, information and social factors were across the board, the, the top salient factor influencing those, those items. And I also will say this, these two graphs that we just shared are from the data that we got from interviews. It doesn't incorporate the data from community workshops, but those, the data that we did get from community workshops really supported and highlighted these same, same themes and same factors. So, that was cool. A lot of consistency. Am I missing anything there? Yeah, okay. So, I think we can go to the next slide. So, Ellie's going to talk a little bit more about like what the kind of outcomes and next steps for this are. But one of those is a document, a report containing recommendations for the Boulder Watershed Collective and other groups that are going to be taking the next steps on the CWPP. But that does include a lot of specific action items based off of this work that we've just done. Those action items kind of fell into five main categories, and those were, number one, information. So, this is things, I mean, some examples, there, there are a lot of different, different things recommended, but some examples are like a distilled version of the CWPP that's available to community members and digestible, so that folks know what their part in all of this is. The second kind of area of action items recommended involves, is, has to do with community involvement. So, how to kind of get everybody working together on this issue. The third one has to do with evacuation plans, based on what we heard, recommendations from folks in interviews and workshops. The fourth is resources, figuring out ways to centralize resources and get access to resources for wildfire planning. And the final one is our recommendations for underrepresented populations. I think we're ready for the next slide.
Yeah, so, outcomes and next steps. All of the work that we did for like the past nine months has pretty much boiled down into these three things. We have a comprehensive report for Boulder Watershed Collective that we shared with them. I think it's like 17 pages. It's pretty long. And that's just, that kind of like dives really like deep into everything that we learned throughout this process. So, it has those recommendations. It has graphs, it has like quotations from, from interviews, workshop data, everything sort of mushed together to give to them. And then, our second outcome of this project was an academic research paper. So, when we were designing this project, and designing the way that we would be interviewing folks, we went through our university's institutional review board process. So, it was like human subject research. We were just interviewing people, but it was like vetted by the university. And the way, the reason for that was to make sure that we can kind of like turn this into generalizable knowledge. So, we are trying to publish this paper in an open access journal, which means that people can read it without having to pay anything. So, that process is going to take a little bit longer outside of like the scope of like our involvement with this project. I mean, we'll still, we'll be doing it, but it's not ready right now, or it's not published yet. But we will let you know when it is. Yeah, and that just, that dives deeper into those research questions. And then, our third outcome of this project is a story map that we kind of like boiled down a lot of our findings and, yeah, to share with the community. We have a QR code there if anyone wants to scan and check it out. And we'll be able to like keep updating that as the project continues with BWC. So, it's not like a one and done type thing. Yeah. Okay. And then, our last slide is just, if anyone has any questions. And yeah, thank you for letting us show up tonight and present to you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it, that's great. Are there any questions from the board, first of all?
I've got a couple. Is 32 a decent sample size, according to that book you were holding up? Does that give you the information?
Do you want me to go? Go for it. It's, the way you stop is by finding saturation in the data. So, if we're not realizing any new themes in the data, you kind of stop. There, some saturation stops at like 12 to 15 interviews. And that's kind of what they say, that you can kind of do that. So, I think we did kind of pretty robust, and we did breach saturation, because it was kind of repeated themes, and nothing new was coming up.
Okay, and the second question, about 45% of the people here rent, did you, was that one of your questions, you check renters versus homeowners?
Yeah, we did. That was one of the questions we asked. And I think, do we go into that detail in the report? I think we do.
Yeah, we talk about it.
Yeah, so, we talk about that, I think, in the report. That was one of our questions when we asked, and we actually didn't, yeah, I think we got a few renters.
Great. Did, among the people of the 31 interviews, or 34 interviews you did, did most people have a personal exit plan or evacuation plan, and what they would do if they got the call right now?
That was actually, I think, well, yeah, I think that some community members did, but a lot of community members, they kind of realized that that was their responsibility as an individual, that we need to be ready to go. Like, and there also needs to be plans kind of from the decision-makers, but that we need to be ready to go. And I think a lot of people had practiced and had a to-go box, and, yeah, they had plans.
Right.
And then, at the bottom of our, sorry, I kicked you out. At the bottom of the story map, we have some like additional information and resources, just like links to external sites. It's like, we didn't make any of this stuff, but we have like a link for like Everbridge signup, we have a link for like creating a go-box, we have a link for like prescribed burns in Boulder County, fire ban information for Boulder County. That information's like all out there. But hopefully, if people are checking out the story map, it'll be in this like centralized sort of, like if they're already there, they can look at those links and see things.
Were there any, oh my God, moments where, when you went through this, where you said, these people aren't ready, or things that were alarming that we should know?
No, it actually seems like you're really ready, because the code, I don't know if you saw that code, I think that we were just talking about this, the life and property code. It was like you all were focused on how do we get there, not that you were like, you were in the like fearful mindset of like, I'm really concerned about this, you're just like, this is how we're going to do it. Very like actionable. And so, I think we were just kind of talking about that, it seems like. And you all agree, I think that's a really good first step.
Oh, yeah.
We're mountain folk.
Yeah, exactly.
Can you repeat the question?
Actually, we can go ahead. I mean, if you want to step up, just so everyone else can hear you, do you mind? Because we were going to go to public comment, so let's just, let's do it. If you would please speak into that smaller microphone.
My name's Barbara Johnston, and I live over in, and I just wanted to know if the group had any interface with wildfire partners? I guess I had a question for the board, too, is like how many people, like when we bought our house in June of 2021, we had to get wildfire certified through, you know, wildfire partners or whatever, and do some mitigation on our property. Did you interface with them at all, or did you find that many of the people that you interviewed or talked with were familiar with that program and had participated? Thank you.
Yeah, so, wildfire partners came up quite a bit in our interviews, for sure. A lot of people talked about working with them, and, and what, what kind of made that easier or harder. And so, our recommendations in our report do contain some specific recommended action items related to wildfire partners? Yeah, okay. We didn't like interview anybody specifically from wildfire partners, but it's definitely an important piece in this puzzle, and we recognize that, for sure.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and continue with public comment and public questions, so come on up, Kayla.
Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. I didn't know they were coming up today to do this presentation, so thank you. As some of you know, we did a project, we're in the midst of doing a project out on Arapahua Ranch for forest mitigation, to help create a fire break for the town, to create a fire break for our, our business, to create a fire break period. Healthy forest is a livable forest. And, but there's a two-prong situation here that we have. We're not just talking about fire mitigation, we're also talking about the fact that there's a unique situation with, if we have a healthy forest, hopefully, it will protect our water source, Boulder County, because the water source for Boulder runs through the valley. If the valley is healthy, then the water's going to be healthy. It's not like you can divorce the two from one another. And so, there's a even more impetus to make sure that the forest is healthy, and that wildfire mitigation protection, all those things are done to the best ability that can possibly be done, to protect that water source that's also there, which is huge for us and for Boulder County. And I just want to thank these guys for all the work they've done. I appreciate them. We got about halfway through our project this summer, and for those of you who weren't able to make it out to see, because it snowed, it was a beautiful day the day before, and then it, this much snow the next day, so, but we're so excited about what they've gotten accomplished so far, and look forward to working with them to complete the project. And hopefully, I would love to have anybody from the town come, the trustees and people who are interested, come out and see that not only did we do it, but you can do it on yours, and you can, you know, anybody who thinks that fires are only going to happen around the town, look at Marshall. So, the fire can start in the town of Netherlands and move out. Therefore, it's important that everybody that has a stake, which means, are you living in a house, and do you have stuff that you don't want to burn? Those are the people that need to be contacted, they're the people that need to be educated, and hopefully, that's what it's all about. It's education, and it's pounding this over people's heads. We're like the straw man. It's the only thing up here really that can get us is fire. So, thank you for what the town has done, and thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I appreciate, so.
Thanks, Kayla. Any other public comments, online or in the room?
I'm Maya McAdmore, I'm the director of the Boulder Watershed Collective, and we had a really awesome crew who did really amazing work. And I feel like the work that they have done, and the amount of interaction they've had with community members in the town, has really set a great foundation for us to pursue the CWPP update now. There's so many recommended actions in the documents that they created. There's so much rich information from the community, and there's even information from the community on process that they wanted for the CWPP update. So, I really feel like we're ahead of the game right now to get started on that. You know, we have all the funding in place for grants for this update, we're working on, with Netherlands Fire Protection District, with Miranda, and with Timberline, we're working on hiring a consultant for some risk modeling. And we're really ready to move from this first part of the engagement phase, you know, into more of the planning. So, I'm really excited to do that with everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Maya. Anyone else have any comments from the public? Okay, so, bring it back. Do the trustees have any more questions, or?
I do, yeah. Forgive me for my ignorance. Who is it that specifically updates the CWPP on our behalf?
So, I am taking kind of that lead for town staff, and then we'll obviously bring in the streets manager, we have that person, and then we're working alongside Netherlands Fire Protection District and Timberline. So, that's the core team, but we're going to also pull in, what have we just said? So that's the core team, but we're going to also pull in, what have we just said? We have a larger team that we're going to pull in that will include members of Pro SAB, Board of Trustees and a variety of other identified stakeholders. And then of course, there'll be additional community feedback.
Okay. And it sounds like this process is ready to get underway for the new year. Yeah? Okay, awesome. My second question, there, we had the data for us, about 38 folks. I'm assuming there is some other data municipalities, you know, across the nation or whatnot. Was there something we missed? Was there something that the community maybe didn't have their eyes on that might be in your report, but like our community, we just, we didn't address or it didn't come up?
I feel like, well, maybe the beauty of these is that you all know where the risk is here. Like it's, you're in a different forest type than potentially in another state and like you know, and I think our kind of part was just to figure out what you as a community, like the community members on the ground saw as the priorities. And sort of the, I think the one thing in the data that we sort of all were trying to address was that community wildfire protection plans typically lack community engagement or there's a bunch of, or it's just really hard because it's like took us nine months. And that's not something that every CWPP update can do. I think so. This was really cool that we were able to do this. And so I think in that way that you're really ready to go in a good way and not, and then we'll bring in like the risk modeling and all of that to do all the technical stuff. Yeah, I feel like I had another idea, but is there something else?
No, I guess I would just, the only thing I would add is like, that is something that we kind of, we went down that rabbit hole pretty deep in the research paper that we wrote.
So you're telling me I have to wait for the paper?
No, no. No, I'll give you, no, but we did try and part of what the research paper was looking at was whether or not what Netherland told us is unique. And we found that it is based on the extensive literature review that we did, but I wouldn't say there was anything that you missed. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Got a few, I think, I think three? No, we'll see. First is, did you guys use or reference the community, community, community planning, CPo, Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire study that was done recently? They, we got a grant to do this particular plan, so I'm wondering if you used that at all?
I don't know if this is the right answer. I think like what we were doing was figuring out just what you wanted in the plan. That was our role.
So I guess my question, my follow-up question to that is, because it's different, right, than what you're showing us. And it, and it articulates different priorities.
Yeah.
And that's something that we are going to have to balance.
Yeah.
As a community.
As it goes forward, I think that the whole, the core planning team is going to take all of it together and figure out how to put it into a plan.
Yeah. And I guess the follow-up to that is, does the full report and the recommendations that are in it have anything in there? Because there's no expert opinion in this particular, particular study, right? It's all community opinion?
This, our report is just telling BWC what Netherland thought were the priorities. That's all it is. It's not, yeah, it doesn't.
Because that synthesis is going to be something very hard for us to accomplish, I think. This is going to be great information, but it's also going to be confounding information that you have provided us in, in, in some ways, because I see life and property with that really, really, really low, small bar there. Does not surprise me at all because we are mountain folk and we think we're invincible and we're not, right? Like, and in that CPo analysis, life and property is at risk, right? Significantly in this.
Maybe I, yeah, and maybe we can expand on the perceptions code that was a little higher. That was where we saw that you all had a really shared understanding of the risk here, which is also really important. So it wasn't like the life and property was more of like a concern thing, whereas you already understand your risk and you're, you like accepted it and you're moving kind of forward, more towards action. So maybe that's a little confusing.
Yeah. And I guess the other question then that that has for me is a question of motivating factors when it comes to taking action. And it's, I see a pattern in, like immediately in this, that motivating factors are much more surrounded, attached to money and resource expenditure in general, whether it's time or money for community members than safety necessarily. And that's kind of what I'm seeing in these graphs. And I think that's kind of interesting, but I think that would be helpful for us to know.
Yeah.
Like, how can we provide the right motivating factors to the community for taking action on some of these recommendations? And that would be super duper helpful if any of that was in the full report.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Wait, say that again? Like with the motivating factor being money?
Well, it's interesting how, how the bar for legal factors, right? Because of insurance is very, very high and the bar for life and property is very, very low, right? So that to me screams, what am I motivated by here in my decision-making process? It's less like I'm afraid I'm going to die. It's more I'm afraid I'm going to have to spend some money, right? And so, so, but I think, I'm not, I don't even mean that in a derogatory way, right? I just think it's really interesting for us to note, like if we are always screaming the sky is falling, we're all going to burn, right? That's actually not a great motivating factor for getting things done, right? And then we might actually need to think of other kinds of programming for the town.
Thanks for clarifying, yeah.
Should I say it?
Oh.
Yeah, I think one thing that will help is when you do look at the story map, the way they have designed it is for each of those themes that, that they found, they have stated it as a vision. So it's, it's stated positively as something that can be accomplished by the town. And then underneath that are all the recommended actions to achieve that vision. And so I think the vision encapsulates some of those motivating factors that you're talking about in a, in an achievable way.
Great. Yeah, because I'm always trying to rack my brain, like what is the right approach to take? What is the right messaging approach to take if we do want people to get involved with wildfire partners and mitigate their property or, you know, sign up for a volunteer effort to do it on some town-owned property? Yeah, how do we motivate people to do that? And I think it's good for us to know what the real world kind of pressures and factors are.
And there is a new opportunity coming up with the passage of 1A with Boulder County tax. So we don't really know how that's going to fall out right now, but hopefully there will be more opportunities for funding.
That's all for me. Thank you, guys. Awesome work.
I have a question. This is Tanya. I'm online. How many people you interviewed to make this document?
It's 38, I believe.
Yeah, 38.
There was 20 of the community members and 18 decision members.
So that doesn't seem like a lot of people. How, what was the time period that this was done in?
It was over the summer, so June to, well, September, actually. And that doesn't include the community workshops as well. We also engaged with participants, or community members there too.
Do we have a number of attendees of those workshops?
It was about 45 total.
Great, thank you.
And some of those people were also represented in the study?
Yeah.
Well, I just, I just, I think it's a great fun document and I'm looking forward to the report. When are we going to get the report? I didn't see it in the packet. Is it in the packet? I'm, I'm, maybe I'm missing.
No, we can, we can share it with Miranda and then she can share it.
Okay, because.
You guys sent, you guys just sent it to me when you arrived this evening and I, I sent it to the board.
I think that's just the PowerPoint.
We got the PowerPoint, but not the report. That's all right.
I don't feel like I even have the PowerPoint. I'm getting.
That just got sent to you during the meeting, probably about a night, within the hour.
That would explain it. Well, I mean, I think it's, it's great. I just, I hesitate to put too much, like, you know, like real legislation or whatnot off of a, basically like a survey of 38 people's opinions. But I think it's going to be a good resource for coming up with a plan. I mean, I think in response to the whole money thing, I think there's just not enough money to do what people want to do for the most part. So hopefully with this passing will be, there'll be more grant money so that people can do the mitigation. I think a lot of people don't do it because they don't have any money. That's why town doesn't do it, right? We have a ton in our, right away, but there's no funding for it. So that's, you know, it can be hard to really encourage other people to do it until we start doing it ourselves. And I'm looking forward to maybe bringing that up as a conversation in the future.
We've got, after the workshop, I went home and we, we have three homes in town and we re-roofed, we did the shingles, repainted and put five feet of riprap around everything. You scared me good.
That's good.
Yeah, Tom's good.
But that wasn't cheap, probably. That wasn't cheap.
It's great motivation and I think, and Tanya also speaks to the fact that lobbies can't do that. So, so, you know, I know there's other people asking straight up, like where, where can there be money so I can fully reclad my house?
Yeah.
With metal and hardy board, you know?
Yeah, because it's $100,000 for a big house.
And the understanding is that getting this document updated gets us access to some of that grant money. Thank you.
That's right. That's right.
So, document first.
The CW document?
I think this will be great info to help guide the fire departments in, in the town and the stakeholders to move ahead with their plan. I just want to thank you. I don't really have any questions. Actually, Tanya, did you have any more questions or comments?
No, thanks for asking.
Yep. So I just wanted to thank you. Oh, yeah, sorry, Jesse.
That's okay.
Go for it. You go.
Just in all of this, any recommended actions or strategies for fighting fires that would be connected with trails in town? Did that come up at all or was, is that, you guys hadn't come across any connection?
What do you mean by connected with trails?
Well, you know, trails as de-vegetated corridors that could be used for fighting fire to get to remote areas where there may be fires for firefighting or for egress.
Yeah. We didn't hear a lot about trails specifically as a method for fighting fires. We did have people bring up the need for forest management that includes creating fire breaks, but I don't think we heard much from people talking about trails.
Or trails as fire breaks?
As fire breaks.
We only talked to, like, it was, it was like mostly community members and, yeah, so. But yeah, I think the fire break thing to kind of give them a place to like set up camp during a fire. So I'm sure that might be something they've also considered. I don't know.
I just wish what I did, what I was at CU was half as impactful as what you've done.
Tom was a partier. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Word of the local economy, Tom. Jesse, any other questions or comments? Anyone else? I just want to say thank you. I don't really have any questions. I, I do know that this, or I believe that this work will be put to good, you just, your work will be put to good use by us up here to help us with our planning. And also we're just impressed with how the university and, you know, the master, it's a master's environment program overall, you know, how that program is, you know, well, it's such a resource for us. We actually just turned in, Erica and the town, we turned in, our sustainable coordinator in the town turned in an application for another capstone project on holy building, building electrification. So hopefully we'll get grad student or grad students to do that for us. And then personally, I was, I was one of the people here at your community workshop and my brother was too. We had the three little kids running around and my brother was super inspired and was actually going through and was almost the application and process to kind of remake himself and get in that program. Because he works at CU, but he wants to get in and really take it to the next level. So he was super inspired. He's kind of been hemming and hawing about like doing something that, you know, for sake of the environment and you guys kind of lit the fire, so thanks. That's impressive.
No pun intended.
Yeah, put out the fire. So thank you. That was inspiring and a great night.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. That does it for our agenda items.
I have two things for other business, Mayor Billy.
I have one too, yes.
Go first.
So my, mine is kind of urgent. I just got, I've been hearing, I heard about this and then I just got a text. So there's been a, and Kayla, you might or might not be a resource. So there's been active mountain lion on East Mag, real active. And there's some kind of meeting coming? Someone just texted me, asked me where the meeting, a mountain lion?
It's tomorrow. Hold, I got it. It's tomorrow here at 6:30, I believe.
6:30, 6:30 to 7:30, Miranda.
I think Don would know, yes.
Thanks, Dawn. In this room?
There's also a virtual component and Peter's going to post about that, but there is a virtual option to join through Google meets.
And he'll post it on the town website?
Yep.
I'll tell her. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dawn.
I have two. Dawn, do you, since you're here, do you want to do the volunteer party? I was going to do it for you, but.
Sure. I just would like to invite everyone and to make sure everyone is, knows that they're invited to the town volunteer party, which is 5 to 7 Thursday night, again, in this room. And I hope that it will look very different for you at that time. So hope to see you there.
Thanks, Dawn.
And my last thing is I just want to publicly announce that Dan Gledhill has accepted the town marshal job.
Big news.
And he will start January 17.
Awesome.
Awesome. Good job.
That is huge.
I literally just made that all happen during this meeting, so very excited.
Denver Post notified yet?
We will also do.
Okay, thanks.
He has officially.
See, for people to come here now.
Accepted the job offer, so very excited for that.
Good job, Miranda.
That's my last one. That was the most exciting one.
All right.
That is a great, that's a great crescendo. Well, thank you, everyone. Great meeting. Do I have any other business? And if not, is there?
I have motion to adjourn.
Second.
Macy?
Awesome.
Yeah.
Mayor Billy?
We're getting good at this.
Mayor?
Oh, I didn't hear you say my, yes. I'm so happy.
He's so excited.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protemahold?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And Trustee Kumsesma?
Yes.
Thank you.
We did it with six instead of seven.
See?